Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Cappella City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We're going to be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce that work session is in, is present, and I'll invite the public to attend. Thank you very much. We have four items on the agenda. First item is discussion of the agenda items. Anybody have any comments or questions?
May I?
Yes, sir.
On, on the N-Tech?
Item B, consent?
Yeah. Once again. Yeah, nine B. Mike was looking for the total cost, and I can thank you for your responses. Total cost today, based on the lease that we had to pay or the service fee that we had to pay to N-Tech. In the future, with the land and the building and the service, will the total cost be comparable?
It'd be significant savings compared to staying in a lease.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you, sir.
And I can feed you that information tomorrow. This council, a while back, I just see that before, so that's just the lag between you coming on council.
No, thank you.
So we'll get you that information tomorrow.
Thanks.
Which was significantly less expensive than if we had kept doing all of the dispatch ourself?
Oh, I was like...
Yeah, you were asking about the property and the operations and maintenance, yes.
And I understand that when we were doing it in-house, it was more expensive. When we went to N-Tech, the cost went down. Now with the third scenario where you're owning part of the land and funding the building, I wanted to understand the total cost of ownership in my cancer. Thank you.
Okay. Any other agenda item questions? Yeah, sorry about that.
Get was ready. I like it.
All right. Item B is discussion of the code. Arness is section 1-10-6-2.1. This is concerning our agenda item. All right, item B is discussion of the code. Arnesses, section 1-10-6-2.1. This is concerning our agenda item number, I believe it's number 10. Ashley, do you have the paper? I had Ashley query the different cities around to see how the, our neighbors included the total time limit and also the ability to limit the number of speakers and our, not content, but just the, the, the time. And would you tell me, 10 of the 18?
Yes, sir.
Did limit the total time?
I'll take two.
Yes, sir.
So interestingly, I talked to Mayor Babbitt, City of Carrollton. I, this was before I knew what their limit was, and they basically give him carte blanche to completely limit the amount of time. They, they set out with a five-minute start, but based on the number of speakers, he can limit it down to one minute. He says he does not go below one minute, but that's his, that's his limit, and then he can set the total amount of time. And I think he said his threshold was like 45 minutes total. So any, any inclination to move forward with something like this on the agenda either tonight or in the future?
So I guess, you know, one thing that I, you know, I know that we're looking at different municipalities, but you know, our neighbors here at Capella ISD, you know, one thing that they do, which I've seen in the past couple of meetings, is they do, you know, they've, they've had a lot of speakers sign up. So what they do is, is they come out and they let people know, they're like, hey, we've got 80 speakers, 90 speakers, 100 speakers, you know, whatever it is. And I believe they have a three-minute limit. So what they'll do is, is they'll come in and adjust the amount of time that people have to speak so that everyone has an opportunity to speak, but a little bit more efficiently. So what, you know, the, the board president will come out and say, hey, you know, we, we're gonna give everybody a minute and a half or, or one minute, just to kind of expedite that process a little bit more. But one thing I do notice is that they are very respectful about making sure that, they're very conscious of the fact that they want to hear from everyone. So, Mayor, is that kind of what you're looking, you're looking for, is that, you know, wanting to hear from the body, you know, like from everyone, wanting to just...
So my goal is to keep the meetings from getting out of hand and having a five-hour public discourse. I mean, I don't care what the, I don't care how it's done. If, we very rarely have had more, I don't know that we've ever had more, except the one meeting back in, what was that, 13? 13, yeah. Where we had, we exceeded the 20 minutes. That's the only case where we've exceeded the, the 20 minutes. And I will tell you that that would have been a perfect case to have had a public hearing. We should have had a public hearing at that point. And that's kind of where I'm, I'm headed. You know, if we get into a city business that's legitimately city business with enough, enough people signed up to speak, we would, it would be incumbent upon us to agree to a, a public hearing so that we can at least discuss and, and hold public comment and give our opinions on the matter, which we can't do is under a public, a citizen's appearance. Don?
So I, I know there's a lot of different ideas floating around and everything. I'm, I'm not interested in really limiting the content of what somebody is going to speak about. So, but for the matter of efficiency, I guess I am okay with limiting from a time standpoint, that being the only thing. That's more of a black and white thing. That's not making a judgment call on what anybody's saying. It's just giving people the opportunity to speak. So we've decided on three minutes. I do like the fail-safe of if you get a large number of people, that's why I continue like the ISD's constraint, is if you get over 15 people or a large number of people who are going to speak on a topic, there is discretion. Doesn't mean anybody has to, but there's discretion for the mayor to reduce the amount of time from three minutes. But even there says you can't, you gotta give everybody a minute no matter what. So even if you have, like, they recently had 80 people show up, that's still an hour and a half that you're hearing. And I suspect that when it's, there's that much passion around a topic, you're, you hear a lot of the same comments. So you're gonna hear an hour and a half of a lot of the same comments. So I think that's a relatively, I think that's a reasonable fail-safe. Cause otherwise, if you give everybody three minutes, that's 240 minutes and whatever that calculates to, four hours worth. So it's just a fail-safe to try to limit when it's one topic like that. And I, what I like about the ISDs is there is still a threshold. You still have to get like to 15 people before you can do anything, you know, before you can, you have that discretion. And even if you got to 20, it doesn't mean you have to do it. So I like the fail-safe. And I like the three minutes per. So those are my thoughts. That's what I would be in favor of.
I'll say, I agree with, with Don on that. I do like what the, what Capella ISD does. I do like the minimum that you have to hit on that before anything. And I mean, as, as we, you know, we're kind of talking, I mean, I don't know if I've been on this council and we've had over 15 people sign up to speak. So I, I think that this would be a very rarely used mechanism, if you will. And then at that point, you know, I, I do like the idea that no event will a speaker be given less than one minute to address the board. So there, I think as long as there is, it's very clear that the public knows that like, hey, just so you guys know, we have so many people signed up. I like, I want to give somebody an opportunity. Let's say that we have 80 people signed up on something. They have the opportunity to take a moment and kind of little, you know, like concentrate their thoughts into like, you know, what can fit into one minute. I, I think that's the only fair thing if we were to adopt something like that. So as long as there was some sort of notice given ahead of time when we open up the citizens' appearance portion of the meeting, that people understand that they would have one minute in that case.
Oh, our new changes will be recorded on the signup sheet outside the, the council chambers as it is now.
I am in favor of, of what Don just said.
Right. So we do have the item today to limit or to extend the speaker's time to three minutes. Does anybody feel comfortable making amendments to that motion, or shall we bring it back before the council at a future meeting?
So, can I ask something?
Sure.
So, you know, it's interesting, Capella ISD, while they, if they have more than 15 speakers on a single issue, this is just citizens' appearance, I take it?
Yes.
But they don't have a total cap. So they could have 240 people, a minimum of a minute each, and still have
Correct.
240 minutes worth of discussion, which I think is healthy. You know, if you really have something that emotional, that controversial, I think it's better to let people come down and talk as opposed to feel throttled and not be able to talk. You know, we haven't had it, to my knowledge, we've never had it. I mean, if people show up, I think we'd all be delighted if they did, but we haven't had that. I, I don't, I don't mind, you know, setting some, you know, hour-long cap or something and leaving it to the mayor's discretion based upon it. But I, I do think that if we know there's a controversial issue like that, that I think we should also maybe tell, tell the people that, given the interest in the issue, that we're gonna put it on the agenda for the next meeting so that, you know, we can all talk together about it and they, they will have another chance to be heard.
Well, the, the key there is you put it on as a public hearing and so that you can discuss your opinions and what you're thinking during the discourse. You can, they, they get their, the citizens get their five minutes to speak, one hour for, one hour against, and council can also express your opinions at the same time.
I thought it was two hours for, two hours against.
Yeah.
Or it's just one hour each?
Two hours total. Two hours total. Mark?
Flip side of that, though, Jim, is people have cleared their schedule to come to that meeting, and now that you're telling them, oh, come back to another meeting, you know, and change your plans again.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I, I think if we can't take an extra hour and a half out of our life as elected officials, we cap it at 30 people, at three minutes. And then if, if there's more than 30 people, then we can dwindle that down, you know, to a minute and a half or a minute. But, you know, an hour and a half in the grand scheme of things is, is not a big deal. It really isn't. You know, we, we signed up for this, you know, we get such great pay.
What are you saying?
You know something I don't?
The cookie I got.
No, but seriously, I mean, it's, it's, it's what we do.
I am worried, but that we didn't make a much bigger issue out of something that would be if we just let people talk. I mean, I'm, I'm very wishy-washy on this, but I tend to, I tend to want to allow people to address an issue if they're really that concerned about it.
Don, the only sort of, once the opposite side to your opposite side would be, if it's not a city topic and you, we have had that situation come up. Granted, we may not have had 15, but we've had a national issue that people come and talk about that's not really a city-related. I guess, once again, I would like to have the ability to have a fail-safe to not say they can't speak, but just limit the amount of time because it's not city-related. So I guess that's my opposite to your opposite.
Your message?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, from, from my time being an audience of the city council and being on, on the city council, I, I think we have a system that's working pretty well. I'm, I'm not in favor of having a maximum limit. If, if someone has signed up and they want to come and talk, I think we should give them the opportunity to talk. I may be open to changing it from, from a three-minute to a two-minute or a one-minute depending on the number, but I think we should give everyone an opportunity to talk if they come and sign up. If they're taking the time to, to come here, sign up and talk, we should let them talk.
And completely agree. My, my point in, in bringing this up is that I think to Don's is, in the outlier, we need some fail-safe. And that's kind of what I'm, I'm asking for.
But it's not to restrict people talking.
No, not at all.
I want to be clear on that. I'm not talking about saying people can't talk. It's let everybody talk, but...
Pichu?
So Mayor, we started this discussion because you didn't want to be in a position to make extending the time for people to speak from 2:00 to 4:00, correct?
That's correct.
Right. So we had discussion about this two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and we all come, we had a consensus to limit to three minutes.
That's correct.
Which we are going to be adopting today if we pass. Now we have an additional discussion. You want to limit, put timing on back 20 minutes, right? That's what the discussion, we, we removed that 20 minutes maximum limit.
Yes.
Are you proposing to put it back?
I'm asking this council to consider some limit, whether it's in the number of speakers, the total amount of time, or to give me some latitude to control the flow of the meeting, should we get in a case where we have an outlier.
So we cited two examples from CISD, right, the UN. They had, they had people show up because the school was closing. That's an emotional subject for the people. And they had town hall discussion as well in addition to this public hearing. So they had ample opportunity to discuss that particular subject. Then this was a public forum. That's probably why they limited it to 80 minutes or whatever they had. We haven't had any issues so far. I've been here six and a half years, experiencing anybody signing up to speak for an hour and a half. We haven't had that. So, so we don't have anything broken, and we are trying to fix something.
We're trying to, to prevent issues from the, the future without impacting the current process.
It's not broken.
Well, actually, what was broken was the fact that we required the council to vote on and give an opinion on whether to extend the speaker's time from two to four minutes.
Which we are adopting today to three minutes.
Yes, but in addition to that, then we cut out the 20-minute limit.
Which is good.
Well, and that's where I'm saying, I think we, that's what I'm asking to, to reconsider. Either through a total time or through number of speakers or something similar to what the school district does. Don?
I would, I would argue at the moment, we're actually going, we're increasing the amount of time people can speak. Cause at the moment, we limit it to 20. So we're actually becoming more liberal with the amount of time because if you, if you're saying everybody gets to speak and it's at least a minute, then there's no cumulative time. So I'd say we're becoming more liberal with this, with this change. You're still giving a fail-safe, but it's more than 20 minutes. Cause am I correct that it's currently
20 minutes.
20 minutes and it's supposed to be done?
That's correct.
Which means people would, wouldn't get to speak. If there were five people that spoke, at four minutes each, they'd be, would be done at the 20 minutes. So I, it seems like we're, what did I say, two minutes?
Four.
You said four, and we were talking about three, right?
Well, I'm saying over the current system. They could speak up to four. So five people could use up all that time, whereas at least with this, there's no limit to the number of people. It's just the amount of time per person. So I would say we're becoming more liberal with this, with this CISD's, that type of option.
I agree. Kevin?
So as was, as was brought up about Capella ISD and the recent, you know, I guess number of people that were speaking, right? Number one, I would say is that everybody who signed up had an opportunity to speak. You know, under our current rule, as you just said, that would not happen. Number two, what I, I noticed was is that a lot of people had very similar thoughts and ideas. So it did start to become a little bit repetitive in the sense that like, you know, as a board, you know, we've sat here in meetings before and, you know, we, we get fatigue, right? And as you said, it's what we signed up for, right? But, you know, we've been in meetings and things and we're always tired head and we need to take a break and stuff like that. But, you know, if you're hearing the same thing over and over, I think by adjusting that time, it does help make sure that people have their thoughts organized, they're able to get to their point, and we still get to hear from everyone. And I think that's the most important thing. And I think that that's what I'm hearing from you guys. It's important that we want to hear from everyone. And I think that that's where this council is landing on. But I don't think that giving, you know, giving the, the, you know, the mayor the latitude to be able to adjust from three minutes to a minute and a half or a minute, I don't think that necessarily is a bad thing in the sense that it does keep the meeting flowing. And it does help people get to their point quicker to make sure that, that, you know, they're getting to the meat of what they want to say. And I, I think that's the, that's the most important thing is I want to hear what people, like, why are you here today? Why are you here? And I think by adjusting that, if we do have a really long, you know, line of people, it helps us get to that a little bit faster. Cause I do want to hear from everyone. I think it's important, anybody who signs up, we're able to hear from them. But it does get a little repetitive, I think is probably the best word, on some, some topics.
And in the past, although rarely, the mayor has asked for groups of people to consolidate their discussions so that, you know, there, a, a primary speaker is, is speaking for the group. And we've done that before. That's very effective. If we ever have a case going forward where the, we have a number of speakers and they're going to speak on the same topic, I encourage them to do the same.
So I'm in favor of allowing everyone to speak. That's my premise. That's my base. What we are discussing is the length of the speech, right? And after the 50th person speaks, they will realize, oh, it's the same point. They may take only 30 seconds and they sit down. You know, that can happen. We don't have to impose, hey, you only have one minute. They may say, I know, everyone, 49 speakers said, don't do this. And the 50th speaker will say, okay, that's the same point. I'm done.
Well, I know three of us where three of us stand. I don't know where everybody else stands.
Well, I guess I-
We're missing one.
Having not had an issue like this, when did it happen with you guys?
2013.
So 11 years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to think I'll still be here in 11 years. But, you know, that's in God's hands, not mine. I don't know. I mean, I guess, you know, if we set it at like 30, if we have more than 30 speakers sign up for something, so then it's never actually happened except 11 years ago and where we can, we can limit it. I mean, it just seems like at this point, you know, we just don't have enough people coming down here. We keep lowering the tax rate. Everyone seems awfully happy. So I, you know, as soon as we hang up and start the next meeting, we'll have some horrible fire-burning, you know, controversy and then we won't come down. But I'd, I'd be content if we set a high enough number to where it would clearly be an issue of great magnitude that the mayor- that the mayor would have discretion to limit it with, you know, obviously with the idea that Mayor Mays would, would go to that, that group and also encourage them to designate some principal spokespeople and try to be organized and fair and all like that, as we did with the pickleball folks. Um, and they didn't have a problem getting organized and, you know, making an effective presentation. So, you know, as long as it's not too restrictive. I just, I just really, I just, it seems like the, the times when things are most controversial and most heated are the times when we should allow the controversy and the heat to dissipate by letting everybody just have their say. And, and not aggravating the heat by putting ourselves in a position of saying, well, you know, we're, this is the same repetitive stuff we've heard from the other forty people, so we don't want to hear from the other, from the remaining ten. You know, and when we're here at eleven o'clock in a meeting and everyone's kicking me under the table for, you know, not, not wanting more restrictions, I guess, you know, it'll be a lot of a fair comment. But I, I'm, I'm content just to, you know, limit it to something high so that the principle's there, that if it really does get to where we've got sixty people signed up, that we can try to get out of here before two in the morning. With the understanding that I don't, I don't think anyone believes, and I certainly don't believe that Mayor Mays is looking to artificially restrict somebody or to constrict anyone on discussing an issue or, or, you know, coming down for a fair comment on anything. So, I don't, I don't see that as the intent of this. So if there's like, you know, more than thirty people signed up for the same issue, uh, they could be limited to, you know, some, some time limit deemed fair, and maybe after consultation with the group to see if there were alternatives. Maybe we could word it that way so that we'd be working with them to structure the debate and, uh, and not working against them. And I guess that's kind of my middle ground, which is less than satisfying, I'm sure.
I think thirty's a reasonable number of people.
I, I do want to-
And the mayor's kicked in.
I do want to point out, there isn't an idea that we're talking about restricting people from talking. Because I, I mean, in your example, you mentioned that again. I just want to make, make that real clear, that that's not the intent or the rule would not restrict anybody from talking.
No, I, I agree completely, Don.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was-
And I thought, I, I tried to make that point. I don't even think Mayor Mays is even looking at it that way.
Correct.
No, in fact, I'd, I'd go the opposite and say if we had that many people signed up to speak, I would strongly encourage us to have a public hearing in addition to letting the, I mean, there, the public appearance is going to happen that night, no matter what. And if we get that number of people to sign up to speak, I think it'd be incumbent upon us then to have a public hearing so that we could express our opinion to the public and let them come back and speak to us.
Mayor, uh, under the statute, you could, if, if there's an agenda item and fifty people show up, you can move their comments to that agenda item. And then you can talk to them, because then you have an agenda.
But it's not a public hearing at that point, is it? Because it's not posted.
Mayor, they get to say whatever on their mind. It's an agenda item. That's when you get to talk.
Got it.
In effect, it would be a public hearing. It's not advertised as a public hearing. But the way the statute is, they either talk to you before you consider the item, or at the time the item's considered. So if they talk when the item's considered, if it's on the agenda and they're down here to talk to you about what's on the agenda, just move it to the agenda item. Then you can engage with them and have dialogue, because that's an agenda item.
I did not realize we could do that. That's good news. Jim?
So, if that happened, would we have, does the ordinance allow us the discretion to waive the sixty minutes per side?
You're the only ones that can enforce it. So if you keep engaging with them and they keep, and you allow them to engage with you.
Because we'd end up with a tighter constriction on the amount of comment we could take. If they were limited to sixty minutes per side, right, and there was fifty of them down here for one side.
But that's only on a, you know, a, a-
That's a public hearing.
Typically, typically, when you're being questioned by a member of the board, the time limit kind of goes out the window.
And there's no constraint on how much time you need to take to do and how many questions you can ask the citizens.
Oh, I've exhibited that far too often, I'm sure. Yeah.
Pichu?
Yeah, Mayor, I will, I have a concern. If we put a number, for example, you mentioned thirty. If the thirty-first speaker is, look different in appearance, and we tell them, hey, you can't speak today, that person would take it in the wrong way. And-
Adjusting the time.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why you adjust the time.
Yeah.
We're not limiting anybody to speak.
Yeah, we're not limiting, we, the thirty-first person would trigger the time adjustment, not restricting their ability to speak or share their, their thoughts or words. That's what we're talking about.
What we took the time limit away, right, like in our last discussion?
So the, I think the, what I'm hearing is, we would say something that, um, the, the speaker's time may be limited when the total number of speakers exceeds thirty, and in that case, no one speaker's time shall be less than a minute or a minute and a half. So you'd basically say, we're going to allow a lot, ninety minutes to citizens' appearance. If we have forty-five speakers, that's two minutes per speaker. If we have sixty minutes, then that's a minute and whatever, fifteen seconds per speaker. So you still let everybody talk. You just start to limit the amount of time that each speaker can speak.
Without, without an aggregate limit.
Without, well-
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. So everyone will get to talk.
With that solution, we have a limit. You're saying sixty minutes.
Or, no.
No.
No?
Just the, the number of people that are there.
Everybody gets a minute.
Everybody gets a minute.
No matter what.
So in other words, if a hundred people show up, instead of three minutes each, we'd say, okay, well, look, there's so many folks here, we're going to limit all of you to a minute and a half. We're still here for a hundred and fifty minutes. Every single person gets to speak.
Yeah. We don't know if they are going to talk about the same subject.
Then that doesn't matter. In this, in this scenario, that they could speak about whatever they wanted to. And, and that's what we're trying to encourage, is that everybody would be allowed to speak to whatever topic they want to.
And if someone said, well, look, I'm not here on a minute. But if they said, I'm not here on that issue, then we'd say, okay, well, then you get three minutes. Right?
Say that again.
If someone said, but I'm not here on that issue, I'm here for another issue, well, okay, well, then you get three minutes.
But that's what we're saying. We're saying we go to the-
Correct.
Only if they're here to speak on the same issue.
No, we do need to clarify that. There's, there's two different options. I mean, there's, CISD lets, says, over the number of period, or you could limit it to per topic, I guess. So we got to-
Because, because the sign-up sheet has the topic, right?
Yes, it has.
Yeah, yeah. What if they don't put the topics?
Well, so-
Well, the sign-up sheet has the topic. It's that if you want to speak on this issue, write your name. So it, they would be representing-
I, I think it gets money if you, if you limit, you know, X amount of people per topic, you just, it's a, it's a blanket thing for everybody.
That's how, I thought that's how we have it at the front. We don't have a paper saying, what is the reason you are here?
Oh, is it not?
So for public, for citizens' appearance, it's not limited by topic. It lists their name, their address, and the topic that, and the topic they're going to speak on.
Right. They don't need to put the topic they're going to speak on.
Yeah. I mean, if they really were that interested in getting in here and speaking, you know, okay. I mean, that'd be fine. I mean, if they're really going to, you know, try to screw it under the radar, I'm not discussing that issue, and then get there to discuss the issue that I, you know, what are we going to do? I don't want anyone arresting anybody.
I did, Mayor, I did hear a consensus of, or, or the idea floating around of, uh, the number of thirty speakers, I think. Several, several members of this board sounded comfortable with thirty being the trigger. Is that correct?
That was a number I'd heard.
I could live with that.
Yeah, I could live with that.
As long as it would just, it would just trigger the mayor's ability to set a certain amount per speaker.
Yes.
A minimum of one.
With each speaker being allowed to speak.
A minimum of a minute.
And no less than a minute.
That would be very consistent with the school board.
Right.
So we just have a hard limit.
Right.
Exactly.
What is that limit?
Well, I mean, we're, their limit is fifteen.
Fifteen.
So if sixteen people show up, the president of the school board could say, everybody has a minute to talk.
Yes.
What we're saying is, is that if it hits thirty, then the mayor could adjust the time. They, they have school, you know, president, mayor would decide the time. So that way, they would hear everyone that was signed up. We would hear everyone that was signed up.
So if the thirty people signed up, they all get to speak three minutes?
Yes.
If it exceeds that, so you have thirty-one.
Thirty-first person signed up?
I'd tell them two minutes.
Or you might not. I mean, it just depends on what the issue is.
If it was thirty-one, I'd go-
Yeah.
It, it gives me the discretion to do that. You're right. If it was thirty-one, no, three minutes. Now, if it was forty-five, yeah, it would probably go down to two minutes.
And to be clear, I think what we're, we're saying is, may reduce. I mean, that's the, that's the wording that, that's in here for the school board. Like, it doesn't say that, like, it will be reduced. It's not, it's not mandating that it'll be reduced. It gives the mayor the flexibility. I think that's what he is asking for.
Mayor, may I? Thank you, Mayor. So when we have a verbiage like may reduce, I feel more comfortable if it's the majority of the city council making that decision, rather than putting it all on one person. And depending on the, on the topic, it, it looks better when city council, which is supposed to weigh in on this, uh, weigh in on that. That's my two cents.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right back where we started.
Yes.
And which is what we were trying to get away from. We wanted, put the onus on me to make the decision. Don't make it a judgment call that the council is trying to weigh in on the merits of the, of the, of the event. I, and, you know, and I keep coming back, you know, it's, it's got to be a judgment call, and that's why I like the, I do like the word may reduce. That gives me the ability to adjust it as necessary.
Well, I would propose we go ahead and vote on what's teed up tonight, because I, I like that. I think it's a good one. And then maybe take this up at the workshop as, as to an amendment.
We can do that.
I just, to be clear, I mean, kind of to your point, when we get out there and we make the vote, I mean, we all have power. I mean, there, there, we have amendment power. We have, yeah, so, I mean, you know, if, if this, you know, if this body likes what's written, you know, out there now and, and the votes, I mean, that's it. And then, you know, at least that part gets codified, and then the other part, we could come back later if council isn't ready for that. Or if they have an appetite, if council has an appetite to, you know, put the speaker, the thirty-person speaker threshold on there, we could do that out there as well.
I'd rather see it in writing and let everybody talk. But, but I do like what's proposed, and I do think it makes sense.
Can I, can I, Mayor, if I might, what I've written for you, and you, we, I will provide it to you, and you can stew on it. It says, in the event there are thirty or more speakers at a single meeting, Mayor may reduce the speaker's time to no less than one minute per speaker.
Okay, well, if that's all it is, then I'd be, that's fine. I just, I was having a hard time with how are we going to word it? How are we supposed to, you know, craft an amendment?
It's his job.
Well, yeah, he's awesome.
If you want to, I will, I'll give it to you, if you're comfortable with it. If not, you can give it back to me and say, I want you to work.
I'd be comfortable with that.
All right. Do we have anything else on this one?
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, but don't lose that, because that's one of the-
Okay, so we've got two more agenda items to go, and I don't think we have time for either one of those. So we will defer, uh, items C and D to the end of the meeting, and we will recess from work session at seven twenty-three, and join in the city council meeting in the chambers at seven thirty. Thank you very much. I just lost one. Good evening, everybody. The time is seven thirty-two PM, and we're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council meeting. We do have a quorum present, so persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance at the public hearings must sign the appropriate register located outside the council chambers and list your address. Tonight, for our invocation, we have Elder Dax Cherry with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints here to give the invocation, and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Elder Cherry?
Father in heaven, we're grateful for the stay and all you do. We're grateful for this opportunity. We have to be here today. Father, please bless that the spirit can be here and that we can make decisions that best fit thy will. And Father, please bless that everybody in this room, both temporal and spiritual, with anything that they might stand in need of at this time. In thy name, thy holy name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We have a couple of proclamations tonight. The first one is a proclamation designating the week of November fourth through eighth as Municipal Court Week. And I see some members of our court here. Would you guys please come forward? We're all here. Come on down. Judge, how are you? I'd like to be able to look at you guys, so I'm gonna stand over here. Whereas municipal courts play an essential role in preserving public safety, deterring future criminal behavior, and protecting the quality of life for area residents and all citizens of the state of Texas, and whereas more citizens have an encounter with municipal courts than all other types of Texas courts combined, and the administration of justice in our municipal courts has a substantial influence in shaping the public's impression of the Texas judicial system, and whereas Texas Senate Bill Number nineteen twenty-four, which established the city of Capella Municipal Court as a court of record in nineteen ninety-seven, and established it as the Capella Municipal Court Number One, and which authorized a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Capella Municipal Court Number One is a Texas State Court, and its judges are members of the state of Texas judiciary. And whereas our municipal judges, who pledge to be impartial, who also serve as magistrates for the state of Texas, work diligently to ensure the fair administration of justice and to enforce procedural safeguards for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and whereas the city of Capella is committed to the principles that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will properly interpret and apply the law, and that its judges and court's personnel should adhere to the law and conduct themselves in a way which promotes public confidence in the judiciary. And whereas the city council of Capella recognizes that the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Texas and the laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports Capella Municipal Court Number One in complying with all such legal requirements. Now therefore, I West Mays, Mayor of the city of Capella, do hereby proclaim the week of November fourth through eighth, twenty twenty-four, as Municipal Court Week in Capella, Texas, and commend all those associated with the Capella Municipal Court Number One for their exemplary dedication to the city of Capella. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused a seal of Capella to be affixed as twenty-second day of October, twenty twenty-four." That was a lot. But the one thing they left out was that I found out on September twenty-third, in addition to all the things that is listed here, you also do weddings, so thank you very much. My son and his then fiancee got married here in the council chambers with Judge White presiding. So from the Mays family, thank you very much. We really do appreciate that. And the few witnesses that were brought along, that was very nice, and we really do appreciate it. Counsel, any, anybody have, Mayor Pro Tim?
Sure, Mayor, I'll be happy to say something. So, no, I wanna thank you guys so much. Look at Mayor over there laughing. So, I just wanna say thank you guys so much for all you do. I know that, well, number one, I'm glad that I typically only see you guys for these proclamations and haven't been able, you know, required to come visit you in that type of environment. But I know you guys do great work at the, at the court. We really appreciate it, and, you know, we always appreciate the way that you treat everyone who comes and visits you guys with dignity and respect. So that aspect, we really, really appreciate it. So thank you guys, all you do, for all you do, and we're so happy to recognize y'all here today. Thank you.
Judge here is a little certificate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm guessing you might have a few words to say?
Just one or two. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I wanna thank the, is that on? Oh, okay. I talk loud enough. I wanna thank, on behalf of myself, Judge Graham, Judge File, and Judge Lafferty, who couldn't be here tonight, and all of the entire staff. And first of all, let me kind of introduce the staff, because we've got some new people that weren't here last year when the court was recognized. So we have a new person who is a court clerk, and state your name for the paper.
Ivan Salazar.
Ivan Salazar. He's been with us since about May. All right. This is Judge Graham. That is our illustrious court administrator, Ms. Elizabeth LaVore. That person next to her is Maria Hernandez, just promoted from within to be our deputy court administrator. The young lady next to her is Elizabeth Adams, also promoted from within to become our juvenile court case manager. Our newest marshal, Officer Juan Pobias, straight from the police department, CID, thank you. Our senior deputy, I mean, our senior marshal, Bruce Keier, and our middle marshal, Officer Peter Dirt. And we have another new court clerk who couldn't be with us tonight, and also another gentleman, and his name is Edgar, and he couldn't be here. So I would just wanna say, first of all, thank you to the mayor, the city council, city manager, city attorney, city secretary, everybody, everybody in the entire city for giving us the opportunity to, myself, Judge Graham, Judge File, and Judge Lafferty, we were all just recently reappointed. And I know that we all appreciate the council giving us another two years to be the judges of this great city. We enjoy working for the city. We enjoy all of the departments that we come in contact with. And foremost, we enjoy working with all of these people right here. They're the greatest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Item number seven is a proclamation designating, the month of November is Arbor Day Celebration Month, and I believe we have Adam and Jonathan here. Come on down. And anybody else? Whereas Arbor Day first observed in eighteen seventy-two at the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas twenty twenty-four is a hundred and fifty-second anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees beautify our community, provide habitat for wildlife, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal wherever they are planted, now therefore, I West Mays, Mayor of the city of Capella, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Arbor Day Celebration Month in the city of Capella, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, thereby proclaiming the well-being of the future generations. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused a seal of the Capella to be affixed as twenty-second day of October, twenty twenty-four. Thank you very much, guys. I really appreciate what you do. Who's gonna be speaking for the group?
My name's Jonathan Ward. I'm the Recreation Supervisor at the Biodiversity Education Center, also known as the Tree Palace of Capella. I'm joined up here with city staff, Adam Richter, David, and then our city contractor, Brent Vaughn, from Elite Tree Services. He's been helping out Capella for the last fifteen years, maybe some more. We were just discussing that upstairs. We wanna extend a heartfelt thank you for all the help that you've done. Arbor Day is a chance for us to recognize what trees do for us by improving our air quality, increasing the biodiversity within our park systems, and just making our parks beautiful and giving our citizens the much-needed shade that they need in the summer. By Capella joining Arbor Day Foundation, we promote reforestation of our parks, replanting trees after natural disasters, and the beautification of our parks for future generations. I'll leave y'all with one of my favorite tree quotes, which is, "The best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago. The second best time is in November."
Thank you very much. Councilmember Brianna Hinojosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to each of you and your team. One of the things that I appreciate about Capella, and I think many of our citizens do, are just the greenery that we have and the trees that we have, and we take that, we take those very seriously. And so we know that even when a developer comes forward, we wanna understand where the tree is going to be, how many are we going to have, and if we lose any, are you going to replace them? And that means a lot to our community and to our citizens and to the look and feel of Capella. So really appreciate the fact that you guys take that seriously. You're passionate about it. You're committed to it, and you continue to make this a great place to live, work, and play.
So here's a little proclamation, and it's photo time. I do have to tell a little anecdotal story. We did a, the city council did a tour of some of the surrounding cities back in September, and the one overriding comment comparing one city against the other was the number of trees that they saw. So it was, it was very, that was a very apparent thing when the council toured. So thank you very much for all that you do for our city. Thank you. Item number eight is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their address. Presentations of individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. With the approval of the majority of the council members present, person signed up to speak shall be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker should be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Record Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will request the mayor and council if they would like to extend the speaker's time for an additional two minutes. We do have two items, or two persons that have signed up to speak tonight, and the first one is Mr. Schof.
My name is Dave Schof, two fifteen West Wind Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Mr. Land. I was just in the work session there, listening to this discussion about citizens' appearance, and I didn't plan on speaking tonight until after that. So I have a couple of comments, suggestions for you. One, ask yourselves, what is the purpose of having a citizens' appearance? And to me, as having been done this a few times, and you all know me, I think, it's to convey information or thoughts in a meaningful, productive way. And you're talking about using the school board example of how they do it. I've been at these school board meetings the last few months. There's lots of problems with the way they do it. I'd also like to mention that one minute is not enough time if you have any serious thoughts about anything. I understand limiting it, that's fine. And also limiting the amount of people that are there, I don't think it should be a priority just to get everybody to speak, if they're all gonna say the same thing and not have enough time to say anything productive or meaningful. There's school board members, who I've talked to some of them, that they're getting inundated with emails at home and everything else, in addition to being at a meeting, which I sat through for an hour and a half, listening to the same, different people say exactly the same thing. And they even had game the system, some families, where they'd have a computer, and the father would get up and speak for a minute, then the mother would take the computer, continue on for a minute, and then children would get up. Same family. So I think you guys have a lot more to consider than just what's going on here. I'm not sure that you've given it enough time to really flesh it out the way it needs to be. But I don't think you need to focus on just getting everybody a time to speak. Just because you wanna give everybody a time to speak, if it's not gonna be productive, why do it? So it needs to be a lot more practical solution to it. And my time's up for two minutes, and I won't ask for an extension. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments tonight. The second person that signed up to speak was Joanne Ross. Ms. Ross? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Joanne Ross, and my address is in Richland Hills. And I came before you guys, because I feel like y'all are a good representation of the city of Capella, and I feel like I was terminated because of the HIPAA law. And I did get sick and everything like that, and I, it's on tape, you can pull it. My supervisor, the manager, the director, was talking about my health care to another employee. And so that bothered me. She, she did that. She talked about my health, and it should not have been, and I feel like that's the reason why I was terminated eventually. They couldn't do it then, but she talked about it, and it's on video. And it should not, because it was a very, very, you know, serious health problem that I'm going through, and that should not have been discussed. And I know you guys, I've always respected. And I know you guys, I've always respected you. I know, this is not what the city, I just heard everybody talking about the City of Capel, this is not what the City of Capel represent, that you can talk about somebody's health problems. So, I guess my two minutes are up, but that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Item number nine is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council action. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Uh, council, do you have any questions or wish to pull any of the consent agenda items from the agenda? Seeing none, uh, councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I move that we approve, uh, the items on the consent agenda. A through B.
That's a very long list.
Indeed.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Nevels, all in favor?
Walker, Hinojosa-Smith, Carol Nevels, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number 10 is consider approval of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 1 Administration, Article 1-1, by repealing and reserving the said section of such article in its entirety and adding Article 1-10 rules, things, or times and procedures for conducting city council meetings and authorizing the mayor to sign. This was a request that we had discussed in work session previously, and, uh, Mr. Hager, do we have the language for that? I do not.
Yes, I gave it to, uh, yeah.
I think you, Mr. Walker?
No, I, I have the language for the.
Oh, okay.
I have the language for the amendment.
All right. So, uh, we have, we've had a, we've had a extensive discussion in work session, so we'll be continuing that here. Councilmember Hill.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 10.
Could we read the item specifically into the record?
Um.
Or would you, would you care if I did that?
No, I can do that. Consider approval of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 1 Administration, Article 1.1, by repealing and reserving said section of such article in its entirety and adding Articles, uh, Article 1-10 Rules, Times, and Procedures for Conducting City Council Meetings and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Do you have the language that we had proposed for that? No, he's got the amendment.
Yeah, he's gonna amend.
Yes.
Mayor and council, the ordinance is a change to Article 1-10, Section 1-10-6.2.1, Citizens' Appearance, and, uh, repealing the old ordinance which had time limits in it, uh, two minutes with a two-minute extension. You, during your discussions, agreed on three minutes without, uh, changing that time limit. You discussed in your, uh, work session this evening about adding language in there. If there were 30 or more speakers, then the mayor had the ability to reduce the time to no less than one minute per speaker. And so I've given that language, uh, the amended language, which does not appear in the written ordinance tonight, to Mayor Protem to introduce.
Okay, thank you. And councilmember Hill's motion is for the original ordinance.
Right.
So thank you. Do I have a second on that? Councilmember, uh, Prem Kumar, is there any discussion, our councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Nevels?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to amend, uh, the motion on the, uh, the table. Uh, I'd like to take the language that has been read in, uh, and then I'd like to make the addition, in the event that there are more than 30 speakers registered for citizens' appearance, the mayor ra, may reduce each speaker's time to no less than one minute per speaker.
Thank you. So we do have an amendment to the motion. We have a second by councilmember Carol. Is there any discussion on this amendment? This discussion is specifically, uh, related to the amendment, which is limiting the number of speakers to 30 and allowing the mayor to limit time, uh, should that number go over 30. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had a discussion about this topic two weeks ago, and the consensus among the council members was to reduce the speaker's time to three minutes, and that's what we have in today's published, um, agenda item. Now we have an amendment which I do not support. Uh, I think we as elected officials should hear from all residents of citizens show up in the city hall to speak and allow them to speak to the subject. We should not restrict the residents to speak or reducing their time if number of persons show up in the city hall. We as elected officials should listen to them. We only have two meetings in a month, and if allowing them to speak for any subject they wish to speak to the elected officials, their concerns, we have, number of speakers came up today. We had two, and that's the first time I'm hearing about an issue that I never heard before. So these are the opportunities for us to speak, to hear from all residents. Nothing is broken, we should not fix it. Thank you.
Count, uh, Mayor Protem.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No, uh, definitely, uh, councilmember Matthew, I want to, uh, thank you for sharing your thoughts, uh, on the matter. I mean, that's the great thing about, uh, you know, the way our government works, is we all have, uh, you know, the ability to speak our mind and share our thoughts. Uh, so I want to thank you for that. Uh, I do want to make sure that, uh, the public understands the way that the system is set up right now. So, right now, we have a standard, uh, two-minute, uh, citizens' appearance, and at discretion of a majority vote of the council, an additional two minutes, uh, can be granted. Uh, you know, I think that going to three minutes streamlines that process. I think it, uh, just makes it very easy. It, um, you know, I'm in my fourth year of serving on council, and I've seen people come up, and they don't understand how to ask for the additional two minutes. It can be a little awkward. It's right in the middle of their, um, you know, their thought process, if you will, and, um, and then, you know, mayor will, or, uh, city secretary will stop them down, and it's just a cumbersome process. So I love the idea of streamlining the, uh, you know, the, the process to just a full three minutes, no interruption, you know, and that way our citizens can plan for that. Um, you know, and, uh, the reason why I proposed the amendment was that, uh, you know, in case our chamber was filled with, uh, you know, 30 or more speakers, I'm sorry, more than 30 speakers on a topic, I think it's very important that we do hear from everyone. Uh, in our current rules that we have, um, we have a 20-minute limit on, on, uh, total citizens' appearance. So, um, uh, councilmember Matthew, I, as I, while I appreciate your words, I do think that that is a piece of it that is broken, because once 20 minutes is up at citizens' appearance, I mean, we shut it down. I mean, that's the, you know, we have the rules in place to be able to shut that down. Uh, I think this does allow for more people to be able to speak. Uh, I think it's important that our citizens have the right to speak, and, uh, I don't think that we should limit, we should limit the number of people that should speak. So, kind of a summary of what we discussed, uh, and I will yield the floor to my fellow council members if they have other thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, and it does give everyone the chance to speak, so we're, this is not limiting the number of people that will be speaking. Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Um, yeah, I, you know, obviously, I think, I know that I very much want to hear from everyone that, that takes the time and makes the effort to come down here to, to, to address council. Uh, and I, I agree completely with the sentiments that have been expressed, that, um, public appearance provides them a forum to bring issues that are not necessarily before us on that particular agenda. Uh, we can learn from that. We can, uh, you know, possibly shape future debates based on what we learned from our fellow citizens. So I'm totally in favor of that. Um, the only, the only reason I'm supporting the amendment is really, I guess, twofold. Number one, this is not something that's happened since 2013, I think, so, so this, we've not had more than 30 people show up in 11 years. If we do have more than 30 people show up for public, for the public appearance, um, then I would certainly support, you know, having it become an agenda item so that we could engage in the discussion with our citizens and, and work through the issue with them, uh, given the obvious interest that would exist at that time on that distinct issue. But at this point, I don't, I don't see this as limiting or restricting speech by any of our citizens, because they're able to come down and speak, um, no matter how many of them there might be, it just simply invest discretion, the mayor, to try to, to, to organize the presentation in a way and to work with the people that are, that are that interested in an issue, to come down and organize it in a way that each of them gets to speak, we get to hear from each of them. Uh, we'd obviously encourage them to perhaps have some principal spokespersons that could make the largest part of the points. Um, but, but I'm committed, as I know everyone else is, to staying here until the cows come home, um, to hear from however many people are here, uh, and that's why I favor both of these, is because we're getting rid of the 20-minute limit, and I think that's important. And we're also getting rid of, of the council being asked to, to make a value judgment on the content of the speech by deciding as to each speaker whether or not they should receive an extension of an additional two minutes. I was never comfortable with that. I like the fact now that we've actually given each of them three minutes, um, and that we, we're entitled to hear from them and can hear from them on, on that issue during that three-minute period. Um, and if there really were, you know, 31 or more people down here on a single issue, my guess is they, they would come down here, organize, they'd be here for a reason. And I don't think that, you know, asking maybe some of the folks toward the end of the, of the discussion to limit themselves to a minute and a half or something like that would be any kind of a, of a restriction on speech, because surely over the period of time that we listened to, to 30 people speak for three minutes each, um, at an hour and a half, we would have the gist of the points that, that they were seeking to make. So I, I think that would be, uh, more than adequate, uh, in terms of our exposure to their ideas and their concerns and, uh, their ability to express those to us. So for that reason, I, I support the original ordinance and the amendment.
Thank you very much. Any other, uh, councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and Mayor Protem, uh, I appreciate the amendment that you brought out, and then with a lot of respect and a lot of love, I'm going to say I'm going to disagree with the amendment. Uh, I agree with everyone here that said we are not going to limit, uh, the number of speakers, um, and as far as the time limit, uh, changing after we either cross 30 or whatever number that we decide. Uh, I think we had a great discussion in the work session, and I felt like we couldn't wrap it, wrap, wrap up the conversation because we ran out of time. I think it's worth going back and, and then talking about it. Um, I, I feel like there's no need for us to rush into a decision today. Um, so I'm, with a lot of respect, I'm, I'm probably not going to vote for the amendment.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up on what I heard. With, I, I support the original, uh, published agenda item number 10, but the amendment is not what I'm not supporting. What I heard today is 30 speakers sign up to speak, three minutes each, that's 90 minutes. If 31st person sign up, the mayor has the ability and the power to reduce 31 people's ability to speak only one minute. To clearly articulate a view, I think it's take more than one minute. We do not know what 31 people have signed up to speak. They could be talking about different subjects. They don't need to specifically say, "I'm going to talk about this subject." There is a paper outside on the table today, doesn't say, "You are required to write what subject you're going to be speaking today." So anybody can sign up to speak. So please understand that. 31st person sign up, the mayor has the ability to reduce everyone's time to one minute. I think we should be all hearing them three minutes each without any restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, council. Any other questions, comments? All right. So we do have a motion on item number 10 to basically limit the, uh, each speaker's comments to three minutes, and we have an amendment to the motion to, uh, in the event that there are more than 30 speakers registered for the citizens' appearance, the mayor may reduce each speaker's time to no less than one minute per speaker. So we will be voting on the amendment, which is to, um, allow the mayor to have the discretion to limit the time if there are more than 30 speakers to down to, but not to a limit of one minute. So, so we're gonna vote on that motion now, so all in favor of the amendment?
Walker, Carol, Nevels, Hill, opposed. Hinojosa-Smith, Prem Kumar, Matthew, the motion carries.
Thank you. So the motion has, the amendment has passed. Now we will vote on the, or we'll open the, uh, the motion for, uh, comment. Item number 10, is there any other comment on the, uh, the original motion as amended?
I don't understand.
So, is that a, a point of question?
Yes, Mayor, I don't understand. If, if amendment is already passed.
The amendment passed.
So then?
So we're voting on the emotion with the amendment.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, did you have comment?
I did, Mayor, thank you. Um, I wanted to make sure, a point of clarification on that, the, uh, you know, the intent is to make sure that the mayor, he, uh, has the ability to adjust up to, or down to one minute if possible. I just want to make sure that's very clear to everyone. So hypothetically, you know, if, uh, our mayor, you know, we have 45 people signed up, well, he could, uh, or the mayor could choose to reduce it to two minutes or a minute and a half. Doesn't automatically mean that it would go down to one minute. So I just wanted to make sure that that, that piece was clear, is the up to, uh, and the may as well. It is at the mayor's discretion to, uh, to decide that. So that is the intent of the amendment. I just want to make sure that was very clear.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Certainly it is not, this mayor's intention to limit the speech down to one minute should we have 31 people speaking. I can't speak for future mayors. My intent would be to limit, uh, the total amount of time to a reasonable amount, since we've set 90 minutes as the time prescribed, I would use that as a guideline. So thank you for the clarification. Uh, councilmember Hinojosa-Smith.
Mayor, I have a point of clarification. So, we voted on the amendment, which is the amendment that was presented by Mayor Protem Nevels, and so, voting on item 10, what exactly is that?
Okay. So item number 10 is to limit, uh, during, uh, public appearance, to speak, each speaker shall be allowed three minutes per person.
Gotcha. So this was the 31, over 31?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did that clarify?
Yes.
So the, the three minutes is still in effect, up to 30 people, then the mayor has the discretion, if the number goes over 30, 30, to begin limiting the amount of time to limit the total, uh, speaker's time.
Okay, also the original 20 minutes.
And, oh, and, thank you, Mayor Protem, and the original 20 minutes was deleted from the, the ordinance.
Mayor, one more question?
Uh, yes, sir.
So, just point of clarification here. Since amendment is passed, even, item number 10, I descended, therefore, the majority passed, four to three now. So if the 10 passes four to three, it's, it's going to take effect with 30 people's ability to speak, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Yes, we're, the, the motion before the, the council is item number 10 with the amendment as voted on and approved. Also, all in favor of, I'm sorry.
All right, yeah, I'm gonna make a comment for fun. So, and I'm still confused, by the way. And maybe Bob, you can, Mr. Hager, maybe you can cut it. But before you do that, hold on.
Okay.
Please, thank you. So, I'm gonna make a comment. As long as I've been on council, and Mr. Hager, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know that we've had more than 30 people, and if we had, maybe it's been like one instance. But it's a very, it's, it's an exception to the rule, it's very rare. to the rule, it's very rare. So I don't know that we will encounter that. And I feel that a lot of the conversations sometimes are, that we're currently having are as a result of things that are happening outside of the city council, per se. I believe that everybody should have their time up there. I do, I do agree with the three minutes because I think it makes it very awkward when we had the extensions, right? And the mayor having to be in a position of looking around and, and having to decide, and I think it was, I, I think I've only seen it once where we've said no to the extension, but for the most part, we have. And so I, that was why I, I voted no for that because I think it's, if someone comes here and they've taken the time and they've waited as long as they have to speak, then we should hear them out. And I would hope and that, that not only this mayor, but future mayors would also think that through, because I think it is hard in a minute to articulate what you want to say. So now, Mr. Hager, my question, can I ask Mr. Hager a question?
You may.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Just so that I'm clear on what I'm voting on now, because it could be different in how I vote, I want to understand now what exactly I'm voting for.
Okay. I'll preface it by saying the current ordinance, as we sit and stand here today, says you have two minutes with a two-minute extension with a 20-minute aggregate. The ordinance, as originally written and presented in your council agenda packet, was to remove the aggregate and take the two-minute and two-minute extension and trade that in for three minutes without any aggregate time limitation. During the work session, the discussion was had, what if we have 30 or more, more than 30 speakers sign up for citizen's appearance? And have we lost control of the meeting and that kind of thing? And council said, you know, doesn't happen very often, but if we had 30, that might be something that needs addressed. And the amendment was proposed during the work session. So what you're voting on now is three minutes, no aggregate, with the mayor giving the discretion to reduce the speaker's time from three minutes to less than three minutes, but in no event less than one minute in the event that we have 30 or more speakers.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Prem Kamar.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was in support of agenda item number 10, and as I had earlier expressed, I was not in support of the amendment. My concern is, yes, we have a great mayor today, but there could be an opportunity in the future where the majority of the city council may not be in alignment with the mayor on limiting a topic from three minutes to whatever between three and one minute. I think that responsibility should still remain with the majority of the city council. Therefore, I would not be in support of item number 10 in addition with the amendment.
Thank you very much. Council, any other comments? Just to be clear, we're voting on the motion as amended, item number 10. All in favor?
Walker, Carol, Nevels, Hill, opposed. Hina Hosa, Prem Kamar, Matthew, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is our city managers' reports with project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. So I've got several items to cover this evening, and here's where I don't know what's on your script. Do you have Make a Child Smile?
I do not.
Okay. And do you have about Old Town Square on?
I do.
Okay, thank you. All right. It is almost time for the annual Make a Child Smile Holiday Program, which encourages community members to donate holiday gifts to children in Capel ISD. Those who would like to participate can either select a virtual ornament from the city's website or select a physical ornament from the tree at Town Center beginning November 1st. The ornaments will include a child's gift preference and clothing size. All donations will be returned to Town Center by November 30th. There is a communication survey that is out. We have released a communication survey to encourage residents to provide feedback about their communication preferences. We are interested in learning about the types of content and information you'd like to receive and which platforms you prefer to use to access this information. We'll use your feedback to update our communications and marketing strategies to reach you more effectively. The survey will take less than 10 minutes to complete and can be found at the city's webpage backslash survey. The survey will be available through November 9th. Magnolia Park Trail, the contractor continues to pump water out of the pond to allow access for construction equipment. Grading work is continuing. Woodhurst, all the street pavement is complete with the exception of the stamped concrete at Hertz. Working on sidewalk construction, irrigation repairs, and final cleanup. I know those residents are going to be extremely happy to have us out of there. Dart, completed the sidewalk on southwestern crossing and getting ready to pour the sidewalk at Capel Road on the west side. On fire station number five, you'll see that the CMU work concrete masonry units are going to be going up, going vertical this week. The service center site work has started for parking area and expected to take four to six weeks. Just as a reminder, we have the groundbreaking next Tuesday night, I believe at 5:00. Then we have our work session at the LSP that same night, on the 29th. The DeForest Lift Station site improvements begin with the preparation for driveway repairs. 635 and Beltline, the U-turn, tax, uh, tax, TexDOT's contractor is finishing forming up the bent caps for the new U-turn bridge. Once the bent caps are in place, they will schedule the 30-day advance notice for the weekend full closure of 635 in order to place the beams. TexDOT is targeting early December for the weekend full closure of I-635 to place beams for the new U-turn. And then you have the Saturday, October 26th, so I'll leave it to you.
I do. Item number 12 is mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. Come on out to Old Town on, for your, in your Halloween vest on Saturday, October 26th from 9:00 a.m. to noon. You can find a list of participating local businesses at capeltx.gov/halloween-events. Big fun time for all the kids and adults alike. Item number 13, council committee reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. Item number A is Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD and Lewisville ISD, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one update tonight, and that's from Lewisville ISD. The Lewisville ISD Board convened the Community Efficiency Committee last spring, and they were charged with representing the entire LISD community in the review of facility usage and enrollment trends to share the assessments with the LISD Board of Trustees about how to proceed with boundary adjustments and facility use, usage. The committee presented their findings to the board recently, and the board will now review those findings and determine the next steps. Find out more about this at lisd.net backslash CEC. Lewisville High School recently honored Ronnie Gage, longtime football coach and former LISD athletic director, with the official naming of the Ronnie Gage Fieldhouse. Coming up, the fierce inter-district rivalry between Flower Mound High School and Marcus High School, also known as the Mound Showdown, will be hosted at Flower Mound High School this Friday on the 25th. Tickets to all events are available at lisd.net. Don't miss it. The program Recognize Someone is now live for the 24-25 school year. This program gives staff and community members the opportunity to highlight the exceptional work of LISD staff. So go to lisd.net backslash recognize to submit your nomination. Just as a reminder, LISD families now have access to the LISD mobile app. This gives families access to grades, attendance, lunches, menus, bus routes, emergency notifications, and more. So go to the App Store and just search for Lewisville ISD. And if you want to stay on the know, visit lisd.net backslash newsletters and subscribe to the newsletter. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Items B and C are with Mayor Protam Nevels on Capel ISD and then Capel Seniors.
Thank you, Mayor. The only item I have for Capel ISD is that the district asked me to share is just information about the Vator that is happening. A voter-approved tax ratification election allows voters to cast a ballot regarding a school district's proposed increase of 3.17 pennies in its MNO tax rate resulting in 2.4 million in additional funding. The funding in this election will be used for staff salaries and staff safety and security, including SROs and SRDs, which are deputies instead of officers. For more information, you can visit capelisd.com/vator or email at vator, that's V-A-T-R-E, at capelisd.com. And that is my report for Capel ISD. And let's see, let me switch over to my other. All right. And for a quick senior update, so what's been going on at the Senior Center? Just a, a monthly recap from September. So Community Connections Bingo was on September 6th, it was a hit. Kelly Luther of the Capel Police Department called Bingo and was assisted by Melanie Etchier for the, of the village. Health Connections, getting ready for flu season on 9/13, was well attended. Anne Segovia with Melina Healthcare came and shared information about preparing for the upcoming flu season. Friend Connections, Crafts and Games, was held on September 18th and September 20th and was very popular. Many of our participants took home full advantage, or participants took full advantage of letting out their creativity and competitive spirit. Digital Connections, which is a social media challenge, was held from September 23rd through 27th. This was put in place as an introduction for our participants to connect with the city of Capel and each other on our social media, on social media platforms. Next year, we are hoping to improve our celebration on Senior Center Month. And then coming up tomorrow, which council is invited to, is the Senior Center Munch and Learn Chili Cookoff. So just throwing that out there. Starting 11:30, all chili entries will be judged by our amazing judges, Tracy Leach, Michael McDowell, Kevin Richardson, Adam Luther, and Kelly Luther. And then seniors, if you have any questions about the Senior Center, you can please reach out to Pam Walker. And that concludes my report for the Senior Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number D is report on the Capel Arts Center Foundation with Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Exciting things are happening with the Capel Arts Center Foundation, and fall has certainly been a busy time. Now, this might be rough to hear, but the CACF Capel Arts Center Foundation Dog Fashion Show and Adoption Event is over until next year. It was a tail wagging success. On Saturday, October 5, the CACF hosted its fourth annual Dog Fashion Show and Adoption Event. The main stage for all the doggy divas to strut their stuff was in the Grove out in front of the art center itself. This was the biggest turnout that the Art Center Foundation has seen for this event, and it is growing every year in popularity. The focus for the event hasn't changed. It's all about bringing awareness about the Capel Arts Center to people who might not know about it. However, three, three things were different about the event this year. First, the timing. The event was moved to the fall to try to beat the heat from the dog days of summer. This was, was a success, and we will continue to have the event in the fall. Number two, they now have a dog mascot. There was a dog mascot costume this year added to the event, and it brought a lot of fun and drew attention to the event. The dog was a huge hit. Number three, the CACF partnered with the Capel Arts Center to bring the presented show Canine Stars to the art center the same day. This was new and the synergy was great. This dog show is one of the Capel Arts Center Foundation's two fundraising events of the year. The second is the gala, which will be on March 1st, 2025. Mark your calendars for next year's dog show on September 20, 2025. It's going to be awesome. On October 18, the CACF kicked off the Capel Arts Center 2024 to 2025 season with a complimentary champagne toast for all current and past CACF members, which is perfect timing because the CACF is in the middle of our membership drive right now. Check out the Capel Arts Center website to join today, and you can either reach out to me directly, or you can contact the president, Lee Walker, for any questions you might have. So what's up next? Save the date for the third annual gala on March 1, 2025. This year's theme is Rhapsody in the Deep Blue Sea. Dive in and make a splash to support the local arts. Lee Walker, president of the foundation, wants to thank council and city staff for their generous support in so many ways, from being celebrity dog show judges, speaking at foundation events, and supporting the foundation with your generous memberships and time. The Art Center Foundation and its board members are beyond grateful for the strong partnership between the Capel Arts Center Foundation and the city of Capel as we work together in building a community for a lifetime.
Thank you very much. Who wrote that for you?
Lee Walker.
Oh. All right. Item number 14 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. I'm going to piggyback on Councilmember Walker. We received notice, I think it was today, that our art center has once again won Best Place to Volunteer in DFW from the Dallas Morning News, and we also won the best small venue, and I'm quoting, "A slew of other categories." So I'm not going to read them all, but again, our art center came in, number one, in the area for, for providing the citizens of Capel a premium service. So thank you very much to our staff and, and all that they do over there. Do you have any other public service announcements? Seeing none, there was no necessary action from the executive session. However, we do have two pending items from work session, so we are going to recess from city council at 8:26 and join in our work session in the downstairs conference room. The public is invited and welcome to join us.
We have two items left on the agenda. The first one is discussion regarding the city's legislative agenda for the upcoming session. Actually, you have copies of those? This is essentially modified versions of, of last year's version. I believe copies of this have been passed out to the council electronically. Cali has been working on it along with the staff as well as our consultant. I don't think there's anything revolutionary here.
Great. Mr. Walker.
Sure. You know, me with favor.
Don?
Can I? Just a little bit of a tweak, I'd easily like to see this considered, change the wording. Under the education funding, I would really like, I would prefer it just really focused on it being a funding issue and like adequate funding for the schools and everything. There's a couple of the bullet points that specifically refer to the voucher issue, but I'm confirmed that that's not clearly defined at this point. What is the voucher issue? And so, I would rather us just take the stance we want full funding, we're in support of full funding and adequate funding for our public school system without weighing in on something that, I don't think it's clearly defined. I don't know what, that's my concern. Because that's a nebulous, a nebulous topic.
Okay.
Mark?
Disagree. Keep as is.
But vouchers haven't been defined. That's.
Yeah, but it's just, it's not the benefit of our ISD.
Or what school choice means, I guess that's, I just, I wouldn't, that's my preference. I don't think those are defined issues at this point.
What's the topic we gotta be talking about here? On page number five.
Education funding.
Five.
Page five, education funding. What do you want though?
Good enough.
Oh.
Yeah, enough of this.
It's always the first.
That was like two hours ago, though.
I think I understand, to your point, I think I understand what is meant by a voucher. Now, I may be wrong, but if what I understand is what I think a voucher is, then I'm on Mark's side. We've got to absolutely go against him. Now, to your point, and I heard this out in the, in the community, it's still a bobby, which may be. I don't have a good answer for you, Don. I don't know. I do know that anytime you start taking money away from the public school systems and putting it into a private system or into a charter school, you're essentially reducing the funding of your public school system.
And I guess if we clearly define something such as that, like we are supportive, not, we're supportive or we're opposed to anything that would reduce the amount of funding for the school for the benefit of one of these, these have not been, like what does school choice mean? That's my concern is, it's just weighing into a topic that is not, has not been defined. I mean, it's a political phrase, it's not a policy phrase at this point. And here's, here's the thing, this is not a hill for me to die on, it's just a, I do think it's a point that that's more of a political thing rather than a policy issue as a stance. The funding of education and appropriately funding education, that is very much a policy thing, and I'm very supportive of funding the public school system adequately.
Do you have any, do you have any trouble with the very first sentence on that under education funding? The City of Capel supports efforts that would completely fund education from state revenue funds that would also eliminate the amount of recapture currently required in districts such as the Capel Independent School District.
Zero problem with that.
Okay. So, I think we're basically all on the same page, it's maybe just how to word it to get there. Because, I mean, I'm, and I admit, I'm not sure I understand what has recently come down on vouchers, although I thought I understood. I'm sorry, Bijou, I didn't, go ahead.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. So, at the end of the day, we are discussing how to draft this legislative session and approve. Is that what we're doing?
We're, it's for your discussion now, we want to prove it until November, December.
Okay. So, eliminating some sentence, adding more sentence, what?
That's what we're here for.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
We want to make sure that everybody agrees with the content. Jim?
I saw what I thought was kind of a contradiction, and it's not a burning, you know, fire for me, but it's, it did seem to be somewhat contradictory. On the first sentence of education funding, we say that we support efforts that would completely fund education from state revenue funds that would also eliminate the amount of recapture currently required of districts like CISD. But then, under teacher retirement, we say that the City of Capel supports an increase in retirement funds from recaptured public education dollars.
I think we need to take the word recaptured out.
You know, I mean, it just, on the one hand, we're saying, hey, don't take so much out of our district under recapture. On the other hand, let's go ahead and use these other, let's increase the use of these funds, of the recapture funds for this purpose.
So, Jim, from my understanding, if they're taking $100 away as recaptured from all of the cities that are liable, they are not using $100 for education. So, a portion, only a portion of that $100 is going back to education. So, I am comfortable with this because my understanding is, if you're going to take $100 from all the cities, use it all for education or education-related.
I think Jim's, and I.
No, no, they're not, recapture isn't coming from all the cities or all the districts.
These cities that are liable for recapture. So, let's say out of 1,200 cities, there are 500 cities that are paying into the system. Let's say all of them are paying in $1,000. Originally, the understanding was $1,000 would be used for education, but it's not.
No, just because of the general fund. And right now, they're pulling out about $35 million a year out of CISD as part of recapture. So, but I just don't think that we can urge them to eliminate the amount of recapture that's required of CISD, and then the very next item suggests that, how they should use the recaptured dollars. I would just rather just have a blanket statement. I like, I like your deal about taking recaptured out of the teacher retirement. I think that solves my problem. I'm not saying I'm opposed to increasing teacher retirement funds, what they're getting now is horribly paltry, but I did think that was somewhat contradictory.
But after I read it, I don't think it was intended to be contradictory. I think what it's saying is, we've already got those, to Remesh's point, we've got those recaptured dollars that are not being used for education, so let's actually use those for teacher retirement. I think that's what they're trying to say. I guess philosophically, I disagree with that because I don't want to use recapture, period. I think recapture ought to go away, so then that argument disappears. So, I think fundamentally, we're, we're really talking about almost two different things, but I understand both points. It's kind of a, we're kind of on the knife edge there.
I mean, I would support an increase in retirement funds, you know, for education retirees on its own. Because all you're really saying there, I mean, the recaptured funds are going into the general fund, so saying if you want to increase retirement funds, there's no distinction to be made that where it would only be limited to recaptured funds.
Mike, do you understand the discussion?
I do. I mean, yes, sir, I understand.
Okay.
We have time to work through.
And that's to Bijou's point, we do have time to work through it. We're not, we're not crunched tonight to come up with an absolute definitive answer. Don, what I'm, I'll get Cali to do a little bit more research into, see if there's a better way we can talk about the quote voucher thing. Because I agree that, you know, I don't know what the guys down in Austin have in mind right now. I thought I did a month ago, but right now, I'm not sure.
Right, agree.
Well, even requests for clarification have been unsatisfying.
That's very reassuring, Jim.
Well, you're like, well, you know, I mean, Senator Parker offered what he thought was, you know, the voucher thing, and then, you know, but no one will confirm or deny whether that's accurate, or if he, maybe he's referring to a working paper of a committee, you know? I don't think that was an added bill. So, you know, I think, I think Don's right to point out, there's a lot of, you know, the phrase we've heard, moving parts on that. Who knows where they'll end up? I'm not really sure what it is today as we sit here.
Maybe we could phrase it some way about taking funding from state, or taking, the taking from a state-funded school district such as CISD to fund private schools or something like that. We could word it some way. Because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I'm speaking for the group, but that's kind of, you know, what we see as the inequity here.
I would rather they just fund public education first, and then, you know, if they want to look at something as a side issue, that's fine, but until they fund education and stop, you know, funding the general fund on our back by taking almost $35 million out of our district, you know, I've got a real problem with.
Jim, what's wrong with that now?
Yeah, I mean, that was just the last number I had.
Forty-seven.
Oh, you're saying that to hurt me. I mean, it was, you know, when I was President of the Foundation, we, we like knocked ourselves out to raise $125,000 to buy like stuff for teachers and everything that they could use in the classroom, and we were shipping $35 million out of the district at the same time. It was, what we could do with just half the money they're taking away from us would, I mean, it would just be unbelievable for our students.
So, there was one in here that I actually, I think I proposed a couple of years ago, it was on the infrastructure after Winterscombe Ury, and honestly, that one's been so mismatched down in Austin. Again, the language is.
Where's that one come?
It's on page six, infrastructure. Everyone's taking political credit for that one today. Bijou?
Yeah, Mayor. We've been sending these drafts or these legislative priorities to Austin for the last, what, five years, ten years?
Longer than that.
Anything that we send them implemented through any bill?
Is that rhetorical?
So, I would tell you that I'm not sure that we've had anything passed. But we've had things that have been blocked, like the sales tax legislation has been blocked. We have had amendment, the sales tax and street maintenance, which is on page two, that's actually made it to several committees. It hasn't made it out of the floor yet, but it has, it's on its way. We lost the property tax and revenue cap.
Mayor, if I may, to respond to Bijou's question, I think this is also a policy statement for our residents to understand where our head is at. Typically, we do this with the Chamber of Commerce as well to let all of the members know this is what this organization is going to fight on your behalf. So, sometimes, you know, most of the times, what we ask for may never get done, but our people know what we're standing for. And if a representative says, what's your position, we can take this document out and say, this is our position. So, it's not the most effective, but it has to be done.
So, a lot of these are not necessarily things that we're asking them to enact, we're asking them not to enact. And in that respect, they've been relatively successful. There's an expenditure limitation, and there's the lobbying that would allow, that would limit the city's ability to hire lobbyists to represent them in Austin. Those have been fairly strongly supported in Austin, but have never made it really to the floor yet. So, those are the kind of things that we're, you know, we're just kind of putting our mark on the ground.
Was, is that one in there, in here?
Yeah.
I missed that. I missed that that one was in there.
On the Housing Finance Corporation, the very last page, I think that's an example where several cities have complained, and PML, the Division of PML was given this in a bid that we actually might have some positive traction there. So, maybe specifically, Capel didn't get a win, but by working with all the cities, we're making small changes.
So, Don, I'm looking, maybe it's not.
Because that's probably a good one that I would be also supportive, but making sure it's in there that we have the ability to represent our, have somebody represent us.
Yeah, honestly, it was in there.
It has been in there before, yeah. Unless it fell under one of the local control, but I didn't, I didn't notice that.
It gave up.
Oh, yeah, it's under local decisions loosely worded, and under item two.
Okay. Okay, all right.
So, we don't need a decision, we don't need a, we don't need, we don't need to do anything tonight. I would suggest and ask that you read through this carefully, make comments, send them back to Mike and Cali, Jim?
Could I just make one more comment?
Sure.
On the transportation, I had a question. When we say the City of Capel supports the North Texas Commission's and Regional Transportation Council's legislative agenda, do those agendas support DART? Because we've declined to join DART quite pointedly.
They support regional transportation, but I'll have to go back on this, the language specifics for DART. Plus, that's accessible, so I can send down copies of that tomorrow.
I was just kind of curious.
Because they just adopted it.
I think RTC just adopted theirs.
Yeah. I think it was just like last.
It's probably, their agendas are probably broader, like regional, like your.
Yeah.
And they're, yes, it's not, they support regional rail or regional transit.
There's multiple agencies, not just.
They are usually not weighing in on the DART issue specifically.
Well, it's probably going to be that they support regional rail.
Connectivity.
Connectivity and stuff like that.
Public stuff.
Okay, okay.
We'll get that.
We'll check.
Yeah. Those are curious. I think they did, they adopted a few weeks ago.
I believe that's right.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mike. Mike, to what extent do we coordinate with other sister cities to increase our voice or influence in Austin?
Really, our best connection is through Texas Municipal League, so that's the best way for us to be connected. And then, on a regional standpoint, through the North Texas Commission, if there are particular issues that we all rally around, then the North Texas Commission really becomes a real strong voice for us. So, we use the regional network as opposed to city on city. The sales tax issue, let's just say this legislative session, something would come up, then we do a lot of work. You have gone through a session with me on that, but there's a lot of work that goes in connecting with other cities to rally the troops, because that's a statewide issue and there's state reps on our side. We can't do it alone.
So, a lot of language in this document, will it be similar with other cities or totally different?
Well, we actually pull the North Texas Commission's language, and we pull the chamber, there's a North Dallas, not North Dallas, but there's the North Texas Chambers, and then the Capel Chamber, so we pull all those to see what their languages are, to make sure that we're in agreement, that we're in sync.
Thank you. I guess I see that we're in very close alignment with NTC, North Texas Commission. That's the one that I compare us to the most. So, yeah, comments back to Mike and Cali, and this is going to be an evolving, evolving document. You know, please, keep in mind, this has been an evolution, so if there's, it's possible that things like the vouchers have taken a new life of their own, and it's very fair to reassess those. All right, we're going to move on to item number D. This is Report from Johnson Consulting on Rolling Oaks Memorial. Sherry with Mr. Miller. Sorry to keep you guys here so long, so late. But it's not midnight yet.
It's not midnight yet. It's almost my bedtime, but not quite yet, so we're good. All right. Oh, I have this here. There we go. All right, so good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for allowing us this evening to present to you regarding an update on Rolling Oaks Memorial Center. So, here are a few of the things we're going to talk about this evening, but the purpose of this presentation is to give you an update on the business assessment and the business coaching process that we've been working through with Johnson Consulting. Doug Miller with Johnson Consulting Group is here to present his early findings from his assessment and talk about his current role working with Rolling Oaks Memorial Center and the business coaching process. At the end of this presentation, I will come back up and discuss next steps and direction that will be needed from Council at a later meeting. So, before I introduce you to our consultant, I wanted to give you a brief overview of the status of Rolling Oaks Memorial Center. So, as you know, Rolling Oaks has been under an amended operating plan since. So as you know, Rolling Oaks has been under an amended operations plan since October thirtieth, 2023. And then on April first, 2024, we extended that operations plan to a phase two that has allowed staff at Rolling Oaks to focus on at-need services and administrative and an administrative procedure cleanup, all while allowing us time to work with our consultant. So as a reminder of what phase two consists of, we are, we are currently accommodating the families that have at-need requests that are either Capella residents and they currently own plots at Rolling Oaks, or they're utilizing the Rolling Oaks Funeral Home, which sits on our property. Anyone that inquires about our pre-need services is placed on a callback list, and then anyone needing to purchase memorial items is put in direct contact with our memorial item vendor. So I do have a handout for you guys. I'm gonna pass them over now. So let me start there. So what's on this is what I'm about to talk about. So since we started our amended operations plan on October thirtieth, 2023, Rolling Oaks staff have met with a total of four hundred and ten families. There have been one hundred and ninety-five burials, and we have sold over two hundred and seventy-six plots. So since phase two started on April first, 2024, forty-seven percent of our plot sales have been to Capella residents and fifty-three percent of our plot sales have been to non-residents. So since the inception of Rolling Oaks Memorial Center, we have sold over eight thousand burial spaces in which currently eighteen hundred and fifty-three of those are occupied. And then as of September thirtieth, 2024, we have approximately two hundred in-ground spaces available to the public and around nine hundred and sixty burial options that remain, and that's between the infant garden, the mausoleum spaces, and niches. So now I'm going to turn it over to Doug Miller, who actually comes down here quarterly to visit with us, and he flew in this morning, so we're going to welcome Doug Miller.
Thanks, Sherry.
You're very welcome.
Just switch the slides.
Oh, okay. Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to come in and visit with you. A little bit about Johnson Consulting and myself first. Johnson Consulting started in nineteen ninety-seven by a gentleman by name of Tom Johnson. Tom worked for Pierce Brothers Funeral Homes and Cemeteries in California, working to acquire sixty-four funeral homes and sixteen cemeteries. Tom's expertise was in the acquisition and divestiture part of the death care industry. When he started Johnson Consulting, he focused on acquisitions and divestitures, and then by two thousand and six, they realized that there was a number of independent ownership of funeral homes and cemeteries in the United States that were in need of marketing, merchandising, accounting, divestitures acquisition, all the other things that they weren't doing. So he's, he added, at that point, he added to the company what we call the business consulting services, which I'm a part of. About me, I have fifty-one years in the profession. I retired in two thousand and eighteen and started part-time consulting with Johnson Consulting. I have several colleagues that worked there that I worked with during my career. Currently, I'm helping three cemeteries and two funeral homes. I was licensed in five states as a funeral director and bomber, cemetery broker, pre-need cemetery and funeral insurance licenses. At one point, I oversaw up to one hundred and ninety-two locations consisting of funeral homes and cemeteries, primarily in California and Hawaii. I've been involved in high-profile services, airline crash, federal employees, Hollywood notables, spending time in California. Held senior executive positions of COO, vice president, and president. And on a personal note, I currently volunteer with the Make-A-Wish Foundation, the Toledo Zoo, and a food pantry in my spare time. Okay, thanks. The business assessment process is what we were asked to do, talking with Sherry. We started a conversation in September of twenty-three with an overview of Rolling Oaks' needs, wants, and concerns. I came to do an onsite visit in November of twenty-three to do the business analysis. The business assessment or the business analysis is our first, first point of contact when we, when we're called by a funeral home or cemetery. It's a very broad look at what the business is. We sometimes refer to it as a look in the mirror. We work with the independent owners or the managers. We look in the mirror and we ask the hard questions and help them answer those questions. The, after, after going through that process, we look at standard operating procedures, and that's what we ended up doing here at Rolling Oaks. It's a high level, the standard operating procedures that we try to, to impress upon everybody is a high level of care to the families and visitors for the future market of the cemetery. Grounds and the building appearance is very important to a cemetery. In the, in the business, we commonly refer to cemeteries have nothing going for them except green grass. Once the burial takes place, you're, you're rubbing shoulders with the visitors and the families. So it's very important for appearances and high standards of service. I might also note, of all the cemeteries I've dealt with, you have a really good-looking cemetery. You've got a lot of potential there. We have to make sure we're respecting all religions and non-religious members. We also enforce the, what we refer to as the blind check procedure that reduces or hopefully eliminates wrongful burials. And that is a process that requires three different steps. If you don't do these steps and you bury the wrong person, you then have a second family that's affected by it. So it's not only one upset family, it's two, and it's pretty much a disastrous PR factor, as you can imagine. We also review the safety policies for visitors and staff, OSHA, as well as specific items that might be happening at a particular cemetery. On the revenues, we did a competitive analysis to determine where you sit with pricing. And we will work on constructing pricing suggestions that supports the value that you offer. Policies and procedures, we're working to align our policy and procedures, suggestions with the city of Capella's desires. We work with contract, make sure your contracts, checks, and balances are in place. Proper signatures around all the contracts that are involved, making sure that we're working with the next of kin and not a friendly neighbor or a distant relative, very important factor in the death care industry. Blind checks, we talked about that. We also work with separation of duties when it comes to accounts receivable. Who receives the money? Who records the money? And who deposits the money? We prefer, in our business, three different separation of duties to monitor accounts receivables. With staffing, you do have a need for an updated staffing structure to meet the demand that you have in this market. We look to, we need to look at the staffing model for the future, which could easily involve a sa, a sales team to promote the pre-need part of the business. Market rates and value fees. We benchmark other cemeteries to make sure that we are competitive in whatever pricing suggestions we come up with. Again, as I mentioned, you want to have value for the price and you want to be in a competitive market, the needs of the market. We, we have price shopped the competitors, as I said, and we will take a look at our suggested pricing levels to compare with the service levels as well as the product that you're offering for sale. The budget, business coaching process continues on. We're going through procedures, some of them that I've already gone through to support the growth and the success of the cemetery. The market analysis, we will still continue to do along with demographics. We go out three, five, and ten miles and we look at the demographics and we look at what cemeteries fall within that market. Also in the demographics, we look at the population growth within those miles and the ethnic environment. What is growing, what is not growing, whether it be Caucasian, Black, Asian. In our business, that can have an effect on the products that you want to offer. For example, in the Asian market, they require water features, a pond, a lake, a rolling stream. Religious organizations might require statuary in that particular area, in that section. So you want to make sure that if you are going to put statuary and devote a section to Catholics, Protestants, Methodists, whatever the case may be, that the demographics support you have a market for it. And we're continuing to look at that. Other than that, again, I want to add, you have a good-looking cemetery, there's a lot of potential. I've seen a lot worse.
All right, so as you heard from Doug, we've been making a lot of progress towards the success of Rolling Oaks and continuing to move forward with our operational updates. So at the beginning of this presentation, I let you know that I would, I would be back at a future meeting to discuss a few items with you, in which we'll need some direction to move forward. So I have those items listed up on the screen and I'll kind of talk through those here. So these items will create policy decisions that will impact the standard operations, so it's really important that we discuss these prior to finalizing and implementing them. So the first thing that we'll need to have some discussion on is the fault, ooh, sorry, philosophy of Rolling Oaks Memorial Center. So is it, you know, do we still want to be a community cemetery, or do we want to be a regional amenity? Do you envision us as a facility that financially breaks even or a facility that generates profit? We will discuss the price and rate increases that we will need to take place in the future, and then we will propose a policy to instate a revised number of plots that can be owned by one person, and we will discuss the need for a potential of a small expansion in the future. So prior to all of this information, we will provide you, as Doug mentioned, we will provide you with some additional demographic information that will allow you to help us make these decisions moving forward. And so at this time, no direction is needed, but we did want to leave you with these items so you had some time to reflect on them. And Doug and I are here and happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the business assessment or business coaching process.
I had a question. You said that we had eight thousand spaces of, in the both cemetery, or the old and new sections, is that correct?
Yes.
And nineteen, eighteen hundred and fifty-three are occupied?
Yes.
But you said only two hundred of them are available?
Available, so all of them are purchased, but occupied means there's someone actually buried in the ground. So there could be reserved, and then we only have the two hundred remaining.
For purchase?
For purchase.
Wow. Okay, I'm shocked. I thought we had many, 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 many more than that. Bijou?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that. Did you say eight thousand plots sold?
Yes, to date.
Okay. How many are residents? How many are non-residents?
I don't have those numbers this evening, but I can get those numbers for you.
But I do see that you have April first to twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth, forty-seven percent are corporate residents.
Yes, and that's just in that time period of the plots that we sold during April through current.
So you haven't done a study prior to then?
We haven't, I haven't pulled those numbers recently. I can get you for all eight thousand as far as who's Capella versus, or who's resident versus non-resident. We did have numbers prior, so when we started the amended operations plan in October, so from October to April, the, out of the plots we sold, only nine percent were Capella residents at that time. And then so from April to now, we've actually bumped it up.
So eight thousand sold, how many left to sell?
We have around two hundred to sell to the public.
So I'm shocked, like you are.
Mm-hmm. Right, which is why we need to have the discussion about a potential extension.
Okay.
How much would the expansion add? How many plots?
So we're looking at roughly what we talk about, Tyler.
Fifteen.
Around fifteen hundred. And so we did a phase two expansion back in, we, we finished it in twenty twenty-one. And so that, we put in the infrastructure for that, the roads, some of the open areas right there. And so we wouldn't be talking about a full expansion, like going back into the woods. This would just be expanding on some of the gardens we already have, that we would just need to add lot pins and irrigation and a couple other things to get those ready, and that would add those fifteen hundred spaces pretty quickly at a reasonable price.
Ramesh next, and then Don and Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Sherry, I'm just trying to understand, so we have two hundred remaining, since April one of this year, why did we still sell majority of the plots to non-Capella residents?
Yes. So a lot of that is either because they had already had appointments. So prior to our amended operation plan, starting on April first, we already had two months of appointments scheduled out. So some of that equates to those appointments that we went ahead and kept on the books. The other part of that is a lot of our, our Rolling Oaks Funeral Home that we have sitting on our property, a lot of our non-residents actually utilize that funeral home so that they could then be buried into our cemetery.
I'll just add, I was going to say quietly, but my question, thank you. That is a huge philosophical issue for the cemetery, because through time, if it was intended to be for Capella residents, there was never any policy put in place that restricted the use or the sale to only Capella residents. So early in its existence, the pricing was such that in the market, people came to Capella because the plots were so inexpensive. So we've put ourselves in this position based on philosophy of pricing.
So just a poll, I thought we had a restriction, family members of residents can buy.
Yeah, the, I'm not sure I understand your question. There is nothing that prevents non-residents from purchasing plots. We do not have anything that prevents that from happening.
Right. That happens because if I'm a resident of Capella, if my family member wants to purchase a plot in Capella, they can do that through me.
Anybody can do it. They don't have to go through you.
There, there, I don't know how else to answer the question. There is no restriction on anyone from the non, this non, a non-resident to purchase whatever mechanism that they use.
That restriction was put in place April first, so that is like a minute, but not previous.
Operating rights.
Yeah, I understand, so they give a discount.
That gets in that whole pricing.
Family, yeah. Family members get a discount, okay, that's what I.
Yeah, but they still buy.
Okay, Don?
It sounds like there's a lot of additional information coming in and everything. Is part of the analysis, the market value of the cemetery as an enterprise today, and maybe even the market value of the cemetery as an enterprise if we were to expand it as if, as if there was a divestiture? Is that part of the analysis by chance?
Doug, speak on that a little bit.
We do valuations as well. That's not my niche.
Okay.
But we do offer valuations to push it out five years, ten years, based on the growth on developed property that you have. Are you going to develop it? What are you going to put on it? Different product. There's a variety of ways you can look at it. Simple answer is yes, we can do that.
Okay, but that's not in, that's not part of the.
Right, because we weren't asked.
Right, I understand.
Philosophy, the council wants us to take a look at that option, we would have to go back to Johnson's.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to clarify. I knew that, I knew you'd not been given that direction, but I just was curious if what was part of that.
They could do that for us.
Okay, thanks.
Kevin?
So April first, twenty twenty-four, those were those appointments that were on the books?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure I understood that piece. And then I guess, what does the timeline look like for you coming back to have the philosophical discussion? Because the shock response I'm hearing here, it seems like understanding the philosophical piece and then, you know, move forward, is this going to be a relatively quick?
We're hoping to come back to you guys in December. That is the plan.
Okay, all right, did, want to make sure, I would, sense of urgency feels high on this piece, so. Maybe soon, I don't know.
There's only one meeting in November and one in December, so. Plan is December.
Brianna?
Thank you.
Priyana?
I guess kind of the follow-up to that, will we, is this part of our retreat conversation?
No, was not planned on.
Okay, because I, I don't know, I just, I feel like this is a longer discussion.
Oh, okay.
Because I think we've talked about, I mean, now there's a proposal of future small expansion and then I'd love to understand if we're going to continue in the business of burials. So, or cemetery business. So I think, I, I'd love to know timing. It does sound like there's an urgency and staff needs direction. There's a lot happening. The other thing I want to know, maybe this has been asked and answered, but I'm confused. So the October to September has numbers. Then there's, so that's 11 plots, and then there's five months. So part of that that has percentages, we don't have the numbers that go with the percentages, do we?
I can actually tell you those numbers.
Plot sales?
Yeah, so from April, yes, so from April to September, we had 116 sales.
160?
101.6, 116, yep.
Oh, 116, okay, thank you.
And so 40 of those were non-residents.
53, okay, perfect, that's helpful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Uh, Ramesh?
Thank you, mayor. Sheri, I know council member Priyana's comment kind of threw me for a loop. But if, if we decide to remain in this business, you know, do you now have the information on, based on demand and supply, the current price point for Capella residents? I mean, you don't have to answer now, but is that something that you're working with? With JCG?
Yes.
And by December, you will have that number?
Yes, we will have a number. We've been running numbers in comparison, like Doug talked about, in market values and market rates in comparison with other cemeteries in our market and our area. And so we'll have a definitive number that we're looking at charging.
Thank you.
Jim?
So my question was, given the lower price points that we started with out there and all the other issues that we've experienced, I understand that part of the sales proceeds go into a trust that is dedicated for the maintenance and operation of the property going forward. And if we've only got 200 plots left and we're looking at a small expansion of another 1,500, it seems like the die is fairly well cast. What kind of sustainability analysis have we done with respect to the funds available in trust today? And how that would affect the price point going forward for the remaining sales and potentially even the need for the small expansion? And how close are we to being unsustainable?
And that's actually what we're working on right now between, I didn't even introduce you guys to the Rolling Oaks Memorial Center manager, so my apologies, but Tyler Peace is here with us as well. So that's something between myself, Tyler, and Doug that we've been working on to look at. Pricing points, given the 15% that goes into the perpetual care fund. So the 15% that goes in there, our pricing fund, what that looks like, given the Capella resident discount, given how many spaces we need to sell annually, given how much the expansion. So we're looking at all those numbers now and we hope to be able to bring that to you in December to have it kind of finalized of what it looks like. This is what we must sell our plots at to be able to sustain future.
I mean, are we that close to being unsustainable if we only sell off the remaining 200 plots?
I would say yes, then we would have to start, after a few years, two, three, four years, we probably have to start looking at our perpetual care funds to operate maintenance.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see that analysis, including the yield that we're getting on the fund and, you know, just a broad-based look at what our exposure is going forward on that.
I agree with Jim. If there's an, if it's unsustainable, then the city's on the hook. And I am actually very concerned that you're saying, you don't even know that. I thought we were on top of that, so.
We probably are, but I just want to kind of know where we stand and how that would affect the decision going forward on the expansion. Because it seems to me that they might be interrelated.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Bijan?
Yeah, my, just a question. When did we open the cemetery?
Oh, during Jim Witt's time.
2008.
So Jim Wright, when Jim left and Clay took over.
Yes.
There you go.
Did we do a business assessment, do anybody know, at that time? Or did we update?
I'm going to have to defer because this was one of those Jim Witt missions.
Yeah, we did, it wasn't as deep as a business assessment as we're doing now. It was more of an operations plan philosophy that was put together at that time. And so we've actually been operating under that since 2008 with a couple updates here and there.
So I'm going to ask the question, and if it's inappropriate at this time for later, just say that, don't feel obliged to try to answer it. But of the 6,147 spaces that are unoccupied, do we know how many of those were bought on speculation?
I do not have that at this time.
Okay.
Mayor, I didn't understand that question. So they would, they would, they would buy two places? What do you mean by speculation? Everyone's going to die.
That's a good point.
So.
Maybe not intend to burn it.
Get a broker fee.
Yeah.
Sell it all, yeah.
All in all, no one can actually sell.
I mean, are they allowing that?
Well, we didn't, we don't.
We haven't prepared.
We never put any controls on that.
So like someone can buy 10 and then?
Well, it's more like 200.
Well, not yet, too. I'm just, I'm just giving you an example and then sell them.
Yeah.
And, and by the way, you know, all these questions you guys are asking are good. And every time you ask a question, there is a reason why it wasn't done in a particular way. Not that it was the right reason, but there was a reason. I remember sitting through even as late as 2016 or 17 and talking about limiting the number of plots that a person could buy. And then go, well, what happens if you have a family of,
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Of eight, and you need another four for your, your in-laws, you know? And, and so it gets, that gets into a tough discussion. And so there are reasons why we are who we are. They may not be good reasons, but they're there.
And, and I'll just add, in the very beginning, when you think of, the discussion has happened before I even came on council because there was already talk of wanting to start and end here, I'll just say, right? So, so you, yeah, you were born here, you can die here, right? Or whatever it might be.
Community for a lifetime.
Yes, a community for a lifetime, exactly. So that was all part of the tat line, perfect. And, and the branding of Capella. And so there was already conversations and it was already on its way. So when 2008 came around and it opened, I think there was still a lot of unknowns, right? There was this idea of, we want to make it affordable. It's going to be for our residents or extended family. And like you said, it came up again in 2016. What if, what if, what if? And I think now it's been an operation for the amount of time that it has. We now have limited plots available, so then the question is,
What do we do?
What do we do? Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I remember very clearly, some of our large churches came in and wanted to purchase, you know, a large number of lots. And are you going to tell them no? It's like, you know, it's a, so anyway, okay, I'm sorry, we're off track. Anybody have any other questions for Sheri or?
No, other than, I guess, what, what's the timing, the next steps, maybe?
So.
Because I know you mentioned December coming back, but.
The plan is to come back in December and have some more solid information around these items to present to you guys so that we can have the discussion and move forward and potentially get some move-forward items so that we can go and change procedures, policies, and begin that operation plan.
And so we have potential work sessions in January, and then we also have a retreat in January.
Yeah.
So there will be kind of an immediate.
Yeah, it won't be like a one and done.
Right.
Not that I don't think all of our issues are big issues, but I think this one is at a very pivotal moment and crossroad, whatever we want to call it. Would it help, and I'll look to you, Mike, would it help if, like, I don't know, give us a timeline, but if some of us have questions that we can kind of get ahead of to send, that we know we want answered by then so that we can have that fruitful, productive conversation and hopefully to get somewhere sooner rather than later?
The answer is always yes, if you have some questions.
Yeah, so just saying, just like, okay.
She's giving you an overview of what is going to be coming forward. You've already asked some questions tonight to, you know, to generate, okay, this is what I'd like to see, right? So it's already helped. And so as you go away and think about it and even experience it in your own families, right? In terms of dealing with funeral homes, dealing with plots, dealing with those kinds of things. What are those kind of questions that you have, right? And then get that to us and we'll, we'll be able to talk about it.
Ramesh?
Thank you, mayor. Last question. Sheri, that solvency, insolvency thing is continuing to bother me. A question for Mr. Miller. Is there any insurance agency that would sell and policy that would cover us till we?
I want to ask you, it's a public cemetery. So it's, I want to make sure we're understanding what you're saying. Because are you talking about perpetual care?
No.
Or, or solvency? So, so here's the deal. If I use your terms as I'm interpreting them, it is a public cemetery that we will continue to take care of until you tell us to do something different, as it relates to divestiture. So it's not a question of ever being insolvent. I don't want anybody to walk out of here thinking that something is insolvent.
The way I understood it, Mike, is let's say it costs us $5 million a year to run. If the trust is only going to pay 4 and 1/2.
This goes to, I was talking to him about it. So you have to understand, statute sets up that we have to set aside 15% of every sale. It will never cover the full cost. So if you're thinking that that 15% was supposed to cover the full cost of continuing maintenance, it wouldn't.
Oh, okay.
So that's the reason why I want to be real clear about understanding.
I do not know that. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
So, so I would definitely like to know how much the city will be contributing.
Oh, you could, yes, sir, you can look through your budget now and see what it's costing us now. And it's, I can't see it costing less.
All right. Anybody have, any other questions? Thank you very much. We will see you guys in December then.
Nobody got to.
If not before.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
All right, the time is 9:23. We're going to adjourn from work session and reconvene into the regular session of the city council. So we're going to adjourn it.
All right.